Seven o'clock, I'd like to call the meeting to order. I beg everyone to please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ellie, would you call the roll, please?
Jim Dombek.
Here.
James Shiloh.
Here.
Christian Koppel.
Here.
Michael DeVito.
Here.
Beth Marie Evans.
Here.
Alex Grados.
Here.
Eric Jones.
Present.
The form is present.
Thank you. Is there a motion, well, are there any changes to the agenda? Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call.
Jones?
Yes.
Shiloh?
Yes.
Koppel?
Yes.
DeVito?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Grados?
Yes.
Dombek?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Audience to visitors, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the board this evening?
Yes. Hi, good evening. My name is Kathy Nuss, and I am here with a few of my neighbors. We live in Old Mill Park Community, right across from the middle school. I'm here to address the property tax burden on Sycamore residents. And specifically for seniors, we live in a designated senior community. My husband and I moved from Dubage County to Sycamore two years ago. My husband was a DeKalb County Sheriff after graduating from NIU. After a few years, he moved to Florida, but Sycamore always had a special place in his heart. He made lifelong friends, and when he retired, we moved to Sycamore to be close to our friends. We sold our family home after four years of a mortgage, which allowed us to pay cash for our condo. That's a lot of our dreams when we get to our retirement age, not to have a mortgage. In a senior designated community, there were no established property taxes on the first few buildings. When we received our first tax bill, we were dumbfounded. I met with the township assessor, who was uninterested in the financial burden that created. Then I met with the county assessor, and we appealed our taxes, along with the rest of us. We all got together and appealed our taxes. The assessed value was adjusted, and that lowered our taxes a little. Then this year, there was a state assessed adjustment. Whatever gains we achieved last year has been chipped away. So currently, most of us are paying $1,100 each month for property taxes on retirement income. 62.2% of our property taxes go to the school. No one argues that a community helps pay for schools and services, but the tax base in Sycamore, 70% from homeowners for the school. Other neighboring communities are 50 and 60%. Anyone that might be investigating Sycamore as a new community to call home will back away. Do you know the numbers of potential home buyers that chose other towns because of the taxes? Then add insult to injury, you charge seniors an impact fee for schools that we will never impact unless there was a miracle. I raised my children in Neighborville where you modeled the B-FROM. Are people flooding to move here, is my question. I did some research. Your school enrollment has declined 5% over the last five years. So after speaking to the county, all of us went to the city council meeting, we met with the county. Explain how you will address the 18.76% ratio of debt service to expenditures. How are you paying down the debt service? What cost-cutting measures have you implemented? Stop the impact fee if new schools are not needed and reimburse the seniors that have paid it. What will you do to keep residents from moving? Ed?
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board?
No, I think you've said it all.
Okay.
No one else wishes to address the board at this time? Okay, we'll move on then to the next item. Communications, correspondence, informational items. Letters and newsletters, quite a few. FOIA requests, I saw two FOIA requests, oh, bond with two. Committee reports.
I have a committee report. Planning and zoning commission met last night. I guess in partial response to some of the comments here. Obviously, we have a great need in Sycamore to diversify our tax base, which isn't anything that we have control over as a school district, but it is nice to hear about some of the commercial development going on. So I'll address a few of the things that were brought up in the meeting last night. The first item for consideration was amending our unified development ordinance. Basically, the definitions that we have for the types of properties, commercial, manufacturing, residential in town, and what can be permitted in those spaces. The reason driving that amendment was the windows distillery that's going into the old Anaconda Building, which is zoned as manufacturing. They want to be able to open up a banquet space, restaurant, taproom, tasting room sort of area, and that wouldn't be permitted under the current zoning ordinances. So that amendment did pass, or at least had the full support of the Planning and Zoning Commission, which would allow for that sort of space to be used in that way based on a special use permit. So it's not just a blanket approval. They do have to still come before the council gets those approved on a case-by-case basis, but now at least our code allows for that. The second was a consideration then from Chris Mayer of BCM Industrial Park for that special use permit to be able to do that restaurant, banquet hall, retail sales, taproom, and tasting room in that distillery there in the Anaconda Building. It was standing room only, which I've only been to two of these meetings, and the last one had about three people in it. So this was, in stark contrast, everybody there was in full support of the project, and that included local residents, that included the white church there on North Avenue, the Baptist Church. Everyone loved the money that was being spent to beautify the area, even if they weren't planning to patronize that facility in particular. They loved that development work was being done here in Sycamore to a place that needed some love and affection. The third was a workshop, so no, that one passed with unanimous support as a recommendation from Planning and Zoning Commission, and the entire city council was in attendance. So I would expect that they'll probably heed the fact that everybody in the room was in support of that as they make their consideration, but I have no control of that. The third was a workshop for high-density residential property that's proposed up off of Prim Road, which is north of Hobnoppers, across the street from here and Creek there. Right now, that's just kind of a dead road. It's zoned as commercial. They proposed to rezone it as residential and put in some high-density single and two-bedroom luxury apartments, similar to what's been done in four properties in DeKalb. I think the goal there is to appeal to 20 and 30-somethings, just looking for, you know, young professionals looking for a space to rent. They wouldn't be available for purchase, they're just available for rent based on the demand they've seen in DeKalb. And my guess would be that that would help address that development that's going in, you know, around 88 with Meta and all the other companies, asking where are we going to put a couple hundred potential new workers every year in our community? So they were bringing that back to address the high density. That passed with basically unanimous support. There was one dissension, that was just a blank dissension against high-density construction in town. But again, this was just a workshop, so it was more that we showed our support for it. And basically, what they're looking for is to change that from commercial to residential. Right now, basically, the studies show there's plenty of commercial space there along 23 and Peace Road that, as it is, is pretty unoccupied. If this were to be converted, there'd still be plenty of commercial space for the foreseeable future, and it's a better use of our, or better tax collection on that than on the grass that would sit there for the next 10 or 20 years if we didn't do that. That's what happened at that meeting last night.
Please.
Spartan Senate met. So that is the high schools. Similarly to a student council, they meet with board members and administrators throughout the district to share their concerns and opinions, specifically at the high school level. It's structured similarly to a meeting where they go over old business and then new business. So in their old business portion, they discussed further placing speed bumps along Johnson Avenue to slow down traffic because they've been having a lot of issues with students speeding along there. That's something that the principal has been working on and would like to try to incorporate into his budget within the next few years. And secondly, students brought some concerns, again, about, they want some more clarification on what blended learning is and how often that they blend, which is where the students don't attend classes in person. They do their work from home or another location in the school. And they just want some more definitions written into the school's course catalog so that when they sign up, they know what they're signing up for because their concern is they're not blending nearly as much as it was anticipated. Sometimes they'll go a month or two without having any day off. It's structured like a standard class. And then in the new business portion, students would like to continue with the cookies and cram option, which is where they go in on a weekend and prepare for final exams. That seemed pretty ordinary, just approval to do it again. Principal Bolster expressed some concern about participation in pep assemblies. They would like to substitute one of their pep assemblies with a food drive. However, he was concerned about having the pep assembly at the food drive, which is what students wanted because students have been recently not wanting to participate in the assemblies, which I thought was a little strange. So I'm not sure how to make the kids participate in activities down there, but something to consider. And then they just wanted some clarification on how many days they have for makeup work upon returning from an illness or a family vacation or something else. And finally, they went over the Veterans Day presentation, which turned out to be pretty successful, it looked like, from posts and social meetings. So nothing major, but those are the main points that were discussed.
Lots of issues, okay. Thank you.
Citizens Advisory Committee met, and we discussed the administrators that were retiring. Let that be known to the people that attended. And then they were given a printout of the new Spartans graphic, which was very nice. Anyway, I think everyone liked that. And then we talked about the strategic planning survey to go out to the community, and it was brought forth by the citizens that attended that it should be made available to the high school and the junior high. And then we also talked about exit interviews for kids graduating from high school, to kind of prepare them for going out into the real world. And we talked about the work that needs to be done on the high school and different opinions were brought forth on how that could be most economically accomplished. And, you know, whether it would be building on to what we already have and, you know, maybe renovating some of the newer parts of the building. So that was brought up. And then it was also brought up by one of the people that attended, and this was something I was already thinking about, so it was interesting. He said in, was it, I think it's Johnsburg High School, somebody volunteered to write grants, so the person was willing to do it for free. They already had a lot of experience in writing grants and got a lot of money for the district. And that's something that I'm hoping that we can look for in the future. So all in all, it was a good meeting, and we got to hear from the community, so we had a good night.
Thank you. All right, items. Any new reports?
Sports boosters met in October. Their president indicated there was something to report. They're having an executive meeting tonight. And the next big thing that they didn't want me to mention was the January 26th versus national basketball game.
Anything else for committee reports? We'll move on then to board member appreciation.
Well, you may know, but not everybody may know, that November 15th is National Board Member Appreciation Day. So we generally take this, Mr. Franks is lucky, it usually happens in North Elementary School. Generally take this time to just recognize the board members for the work that you do. It's a volunteer position, it's an unpaid position. You give a lot of time away from your families and other pursuits. So just on behalf of the administrative team, the staff, the school district, thank you for all the time and energy that you put into volunteering your time on the board. It is sometimes a thankful job, sometimes a thankless job, sometimes difficult decisions to be made, but I think one of the examples of the fun that is being a board member, we'll come up here in a little bit when Mr. Franks talks about things that happen in schools. When we hear things like that, you have a chance to interact with students, like Alex mentioned in Spartan Senate. Those are the good parts, when you see the opportunities that the district is providing to students and knowing that you have a role in all of that. So on behalf of the district, the staff, and the community, thank you for all that you do. And I had no part in the gifts that you have before you. You all saw that Mr. Franks had some things to pass out, but Mrs. Vins, who has the creative touch, put the bags together that you have before you. So you might want to look at the plants. They're really pretty awesome plants. I don't want to give away the species or anything like that, but you might want to take a look at them.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
I'll try to keep it alive for a moment.
You don't want to keep that one alive as long as you keep it, trust me.
That's the goal.
Yeah.
Don't give it too much water.
Well, thank you very much for the appreciation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, next item then would be the North School presentation.
I'll be the audience. First of all, thank you all for coming tonight. Thank you for our special guests for being here, and thank all for you to come to our building. We're honored to have you here today. First and foremost, and then every November, we get to honor the board, so that's awesome for us to do. So I just want to say Happy School Board Member's Day tomorrow. And on behalf of the elementary team and our staff here, we want to make sure that you feel appreciated. So in front of you, you have a North Spartan bracelet, and you have a nice Spartan sticker, and you have a crumble cookie. Our crumble is not open here yet, the second one, but that's, stay tuned. We've got a little preview of what you can get here, so please enjoy on behalf of all of us. All right, so North Elementary, we are a proud building of 291 students. This is our highest enrollment since pre-COVID. I know we've had a boundary study change that did affect that just a little bit. We also had lots of move-ins this year from various places, and so I'm happy that we are growing. We also have an additional section this year. We've been at 12 for a long time, and this year we have 13. So we're happy to add that third, second grade section. And again, we have tons of great staff here, both as teachers and support staff. And then we have wonderful people who come in and work with our students in their special programs, like band and orchestra. And then we had this great partnership with Sycamore High School, with teachers assistants that come over. We have four of those young people that come and spend part of their day with us and helping kids and helping the staff, so we love that. And then we have lots of dedicated volunteers and guests here, so we love it. We have an open building, the people can come in and help us out as we're trying to support our students in this mission of building a community of confident collaborative learners. So that's been our focus for applied work. So to begin, North is all about relationships and opportunities, right? And you've heard this probably in your other presentations, but North is very involved and very, this is a very important thing for us in terms of building a community here at North. So one of the things that we are dabbling in this year, some of our classes have started, and we're going to like get the train rolling a little bit more, is this common expectation with CHAMPs. And so you can see here what those CHAMPs acronym means. It's just helping kids focus their expectation and what they're going to do for activities throughout their classroom activities, lessons, as well as in other parts of the building. So we're excited about having that common language. Not even to us, but more and more of our classrooms are implementing class meetings in circle time. And so it's awesome to see young people getting in a circle and sharing some of their, maybe their weekend plans or things they like to do, but also building that groundwork for if they need to have a more difficult conversation about, well, maybe somebody did something on the playground or something happened in class they're uncomfortable with, and giving them a voice. So that's a big part of what we're doing here. Our activity participation, we have a great involvement with our kids in special programs. And so our band and orchestra numbers are high. Our choir numbers are getting higher again than they have in the past. We have an awesome band of the books team, and a crossing guard who's doing great work. So just having them participate in extra activities is awesome. This year, we've implemented an SEL Day as part of our win time. And so that gives teachers some devoted time for SEL. For most of them, it's above and beyond what they already were doing in class. This is a dedicated time for second step lessons or to deal with some of those maybe issues that we talked about before with circus. But it's an awesome opportunity for them to do that. This winter and spring, we're going to look at deliberately spotlighting students' behavior and hard work. So we're working through our BLT right now, what that might look like and how that may cook. Several classrooms are already doing that on their own, but we want to kind of do that more on a universal level so that our kids feel appreciated with the stuff that they're doing on a day-to-day. Our staff here is committed, they're very hardworking staff, and they're pretty to the best practices. So not only in academics, but in the SEL realm, trying to make sure that our kids are getting the best opportunities they can get in terms of trying to build those soft skills, those social skills that they need, not only today, but as a future workforce. That's not all, though. We are instructionally focused here. Our classrooms do a lot at the beginning of the year with their building capacity for kids and growth mindset, and trying to make sure that they have the skills they need to advocate for themselves and working through some challenging things, right? Things are hard, it's okay if they're hard, we can work through that. We can make mistakes. There are a lot of teachers that go throughout the halls throughout the day. It's okay to make mistakes. What do we do when we make mistakes? It's fine, but we have to learn more and do a little bit better job. So I think there's a lot of cheerleading that goes on to help them through those activities throughout their day. We are continuing to tweak our win time. So our win time, we implemented several years ago. It really gives kids what they need in terms of whether that's academic support with reading or math, with our interventionists, with our classroom teachers, giving more hands-on time with them to give kids extra practice. So we're really tweaking that and trying to give kids more time and more at maths, if you will, to really build those skills for themselves. I will tell you again, our staff is really working really, really hard in our POCs and in our day-to-day conversations. This fall, we had some great conversations with our teams with the help of our math and literacy coach, as well as our interventionists, to kind of help teams create goals for themselves and for their kids moving forward from fall to winter. Those are great conversations had around the table in terms of looking at data and thinking about how can we respond to the data. Couple examples I want to give you is that both at our POC days, our data days, and our BLT, we recognized a couple of things that were not in the place we wanted them to be. One of the first things we looked at was vocabulary. When we look at math tests across the board, vocabulary skills for our students were lower than we wanted them to be. So we intentionally put in, two years ago, a word of the week. So I, during morning announcements on Monday, on the first day of the week, will tell everybody what the word is. And then our staff does all the great work behind that in terms of supporting that word of the week, doing activities with those words, try to find them, maybe writing activities, things like that. And so I'm happy to report that from fall to fall, we've seen every grade level increase in vocabulary on their map between 2 and 11%. So it was a huge thing that we did that was pretty small, I would say, in terms of what structure we put in place. But teachers really have wrapped their lines around that and pushed that, and our kids are responding. Secondly, we noticed that when we were looking at math assessments that our kids in geometry may not have been having some of those topics in their curriculum before they were assessed in math. And so to respond to that, with the help of our math interventionists and math coaches, we've implemented grade level math boxes, which spiral curriculum. So different varying grades use that in different ways, different days. But what that does is spiral the curriculum, even though they're not maybe at that spot in their normal math time. But that gives them that experience and opportunity to grow in those skills. This year, we also saw an increase in our geometry scores from fall to fall between 3 and 15% for our grade level. So it's fantastic that these minor things we put in place just by responding to the data have already shown great results. All right. So, Skills of a Spartan. So I know that Evans here was talking a little bit about the unveiling of the Portrait of a Spartan and what that looks like, that visual. So I know that everybody's excited to see that coming soon. But we here at North have already been working on some of those skills that are within that Portrait of a Spartan. So first and foremost, we are really looking at personalizing learning opportunities. We have several members of our staff here that are a member of the Play Academy that Mr. Rice has talked about before. They went on site visits to Milwaukee and brought back great ideas that they want to do and to share. As well as we're working on really putting in a lot of authentic learning opportunities around some of these skills from the portrait. And so we are really focusing them on problem solving, communicating, and collaboration currently. And so we're trying to do that within the class, with the walkthroughs that administration is doing, as well as in our team time groups. So if you're not familiar with team time, we, about once a month, kind of drop our schedule. For 25 minutes-ish, our kids, K through 5, divide up among all the adults in the building, and then they do an activity that promotes some of these skills from the Portrait of a Spartan. A lot of it right now is on problem solving and collaboration. So you might have seen us try to tape one piece of paper, make a long this paper chain, or collaborative activity with Hula Hoops, things like that. We welcome anybody here who would like to come join us on team time. We have lots of groups, and you can always use an extra hand. So if you want to see that in action, we'd love to have you at least for the last one, stay the month. But again, all of these systems and areas of how we're already practicing those skills from Portrait of a Spartan that maybe we haven't really unveiled or stood just yet. As far as our future, we are developing an SEL committee much like Southeast School has done with the Rockford ROE. So we have a couple designated people, our social worker and a separate teacher are going to go to several trainings and try to bring back some intentional work for our staff to do with our kids in terms of SEL. We're continuing to expand our capacity with data analysis and goal setting. I think we've already seen some really good work with that and some good results. So we want to continue that with our staff. Again, we talked about activities for kids firmly learned in community schools, right? Having kids have extra opportunities within and outside of their school day. So looking at where is it we can expand that part is beyond the current things that we offer. Additionally, we're also working on academic growth and those data-driven decisions. Our teachers are working very diligently on trying to make those things happen for our kids. I get to present to you every year, but I'm not the one that does the hard work. My staff over here is really behind all of the things that we do that are wonderful here in terms of great achievement for our kids, success stories, so I appreciate all of them. We have awesome students and families here at North, and so they definitely support our kiddos, our students at home, and so that helps make it here that they are ready to learn. And then obviously, administration of itself, the leadership teams, help kind of facilitate some of this work. So again, I couldn't do this job without all of them and all the things that they're doing for our kids. So I want to appreciate. So I want to appreciate them tonight as well. That's North. That's what we're doing right now here this year.
More like a win program?
Sure. So we have like a devoted time every day for kids to get intervention or extra time to practice things that they need to do. So we have our math and reading interventionists might take kids for maybe a six or eight week time period and just kind of do a skill development, whereas our classroom teachers might do the same thing. But they might also say, "I just taught a math lesson and 15 of you didn't get it. Well, that's different. We'll reteach tomorrow." But if I have five of you that didn't get it today during win time, I put all five of you back. We're going to rebuild what we just talked about in that math lesson. It gives teachers that devoted time to be able to do that extra practice and extends some of our kids that they need that to. So it's been awesome in terms of how it's been developing and being responsive to what kids need.
Thank you. That's great.
So does the interventionist give the classmates or the discriminants that needs, let's say they need an English interventionist, will they go to that person's group?
Yes.
And then everyone else, they, okay?
Yes, they do both, right? So we have our interventionists pushing and they try to do, help with lessons in the classroom. Or sometimes they're the ones that are modeling good instructional practices. And then we also have opportunities for kids to be pulled out. And sometimes you just need a smaller group and more concentrated support so that happens to be very fluid. Any other questions?
Just to kind of, I love to see the fact that we're using some map data to drive some of our learning, which is, to me, makes perfectly good sense, and I'm glad it's been a long time coming, actually. And it's interesting to see that utilizing that has led to small changes that bring about very big changes. So that was impressive. Thank you.
If you are a North staff member, can you stand up? Appreciate you being here tonight. Come on now. Open your eyes. These people and many more may think they call the work. Any else? Thanks again for being here.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Franks. Superintendent's report. We've got one item to talk about tonight, which really is kind of revisiting a conversation we had at the last meeting. One of the things I try to do at every first meeting of the month is a future-focused item. So the future-focused item, again, relates back to a conversation that we had, the board had at our last meeting at the end of October. We're just talking about, you know, regular meeting schedule for the board, what that looks like, what it's looked like in the past, and potentially what it could look like in the future. So I'm just going to share some information. Ultimately, the meeting schedule is up to the board. It's not up to the administration, it's not up to the staff, it's a decision that the board makes. There are some requirements in terms of board meetings, but the board really has a lot of flexibility and latitude in terms of scheduling meetings, as well as the content of the agenda. So this was discussed during the October 24th meeting. Annually, the Board of Education is required to set dates and times for regular meetings. Typically, you do that in May or June for the coming school year, the fiscal year, which is July 1 to June 30. And over the past many years, Jim, you're the sage veteran on the board. If I remember correctly, from the last meeting, during your entire tenure on the board, it's been two meetings a month.
Right.
Special meetings can be scheduled as needed, and we do that. We have four board administration retreats typically of the last several years. We've changed a little bit this year, and two of those meetings are still board administrative retreats, and two of them are town hall meetings. We've had one board admin retreat and one town hall meeting already this year. We collected some data, I shared that with the board. Most boards of education in Illinois meet once per month. It's been a practice in Sycamore to meet twice per month. And we generally try to focus on education-related issues at the beginning of each month and then operation types of issues at the end of the month. We're going to flip that, well, kind of do a little bit of both at the end of the month. We actually have Mr. Rice coming to talk a little bit more about math data and how our students are performing this year at the end of the month. At the end of this month, Mrs. Stucker will also revisit the tax levy. She talked about the tentative tax levy at the end of October. We'll revisit that as well. So that's generally been the trend. There are a couple of months where the board only meets once already. One of those is December, and then one of those is March. If the board decides to modify its meeting schedule, it could do that this coming spring for next school year. The board could actually make a change during the middle of the year. I'll talk about that in just a second. Whether or not the board decides to change the meeting schedule, several things that I would encourage the board to consider. There's actually a board policy, Board Policy 2-200, provides that the board can adjust that regular meeting schedule, but it has to give a 10-day notice to the public. So the board wants to do that mid-year, just to keep the public 10 days' notice. Board could also wait and make that decision at a future date as well. Some things to consider, just from my perspective, I'm not a board member, never been a school board member, but I've worked as school board for, you know, my 14 years as superintendent, both here in my previous position. These are just some thoughts that I would encourage the board to keep in mind. If the board wanted to go to one meeting a month, I would encourage the board to look at keeping either the second and the fourth Tuesday. That's a nice meeting schedule, that's a nice routine that the administration and the staff are kind of used to. That would help keep some consistency. Obviously, if we go from two meetings a month to one meeting a month, we're going to have to modify some of the meeting topics. I included school presentations because that's something I knew we were doing tonight as an example and things that we've done regularly, just to effectively manage your time. Some of the ways that the board can maybe be a little more effective, just looking at how the board uses the consent agenda. For example, including personnel decisions in the consent agenda, doesn't have to do that, but that's one avenue the board could consider. Maybe being more selective about topics for public discussion. It's really good practice for the board, any board of education, to have some public discussion about specific topics. Obviously, the more sensitive or controversial the topic, I think the more public discussion is necessary. Some matters that become routine can maybe limit that discussion a little bit. I would encourage the board, especially because there's such a long history of two meetings a month. If you're going to go to one meeting a month, maybe set in some time limits, just so two meetings that go maybe from seven to nine don't go, you know, into, don't turn into one meeting that goes from seven to 11, right? Just trying to be more effective with the time. Probably going to be some additional written material for the board to review prior to each meeting. A lot of that same information is going to need to be shared with the board, but some of that maybe may need to be reviewed in advance. I can work with Kelly and with Jim. We typically create a tentative agenda and then run that by Jim for kind of final approval. We would do that a little earlier so that the agenda's out there earlier, the board has a chance to see that, knows it's coming. One thing I would stress is that fewer meetings doesn't mean that the board is doing less work, right? You're doing the same amount of work in just a different fashion. So you're restructuring how you do that work. You're not, trust me, you're not doing any less. Regular meetings and typically what I've seen in other school districts and in my past, if you go to one meeting, probably a little more conversation between myself and each individual board member, whether it's a phone call, face-to-face meetings, maybe some email correspondence, just making sure that you've had a chance to review the agenda, ask any questions that you might have so that you're prepared for the meeting. You may not appreciate more conversation with me, I'm just kidding. But more conversation between the two of us just helps build that working relationship. Again, regular meeting schedule is up to the Board of Education, really up to the individual members. There's a lot of deviation on how school boards run their meetings across the state of Illinois. There are some things that are similar. Audience participation, for example, is required, some other pieces. But there's a lot of flexibility in terms of what goes on the agenda. The board conducts its business. I think it's really important that the board in Sycamore develops a means of conducting its business that addresses the priorities in Sycamore. It's one of the few areas of local control that I think Board of Education still have. And with that, I'm glad to answer any questions. If there's any more information on this topic or any other modifications, we'd be glad to look into that. There are some board policies that address board meeting schedules and things like that. Would be glad to look into that, contact the School Board Association. Any questions for me?
I know Michael brought it up last time, so I appreciate him doing this for us because one thing I was pulling away after that meeting, Stevie followed up with us and gave a statistic of like 5% of boards in the state of Illinois are two meetings a month. Like, it's pretty rare, and I had, did not, maybe I was just blind to it and never really gave it too much thought, but like, I thought it would have been the opposite, said, "We're just on par with what everybody else does." So then I poked my head into some random districts. I booked out 11 random districts and they all were one meeting a month.
One a month?
Yeah. So I just found it, I found it really interesting. I would never have guessed that. But I think, I think that makes you want to look at it a little bit harder, for sure. And if we could put some boundaries and things like that, like, I would definitely be for exploring how to do this. And I know with a lot of logistics that would need to go into all of this, but like, even potentially starting sooner so that a later meeting doesn't mean us here at 11:30, but if you started at 6:00 or 6:30, you know, you could still have a longer-ish meeting where you're not just, where you're not here until midnight. We've been partying to some of that, so. But yeah, I'm more for than against it, for sure. I mean, just having to do all the logistics on it, which is my opinion, but I'd like to hear everybody else's thoughts around.
Would agree with James, that pushing it sooner would be good and also meeting once a month and having a more maybe concise or consolidated agenda that really has some more touch points that the board needs to act on. This might sound a little harsh, but one thing I think we could maybe remove is the school presentations in person and just have a memo that goes over what the schools are up to. And personally, I think visiting the school when kids are in it is a much more effective stage of what's going on in the school than getting a report on it anyway. So that's something that I think we could maybe look into is just not having schools present in this manner and we sort of do it independently when students are in the buildings. And just have our business meeting at the end of the month and combine any academics into that as they come along. I would consider doing.
I'd probably push back a little bit on that, only from the standpoint of trying to, I think it's good for the board to cultivate a meeting schedule and a job responsibility that's more appealing to as many people in the public as we can, given the difficult times we've had in recruiting school board members. So expecting obligations during the day while school is in session and people are potentially working, I think can be difficult. I think reducing the meeting count could certainly be helpful from that standpoint. It creates a lot of conflicts with two meetings a month, just with other school events that your kids may be involved in or that you've got going on in the community. I mean, right now, we've got 27 meetings throughout the year, so that's an average of, you know, a little bit more than one every two weeks if you count the town halls and admin retreats and everything else. So I think, you know, consolidating down regular meetings to once a month and then still having a few of those other one-offs could be beneficial to not only recruiting people who may be more efficient in the work that we do. But I would push back, I think, on the school presentations because I think that that is important, given a district of our size, having a thumb on the heartbeat of what's going on at each of these schools. That doesn't mean that those presented, we've had some lengthy site presentations in the past that have, you know, maybe gotten a little long in the tooth, and maybe having a, you know, a more intentional focus on what the content of those presentations are could be helpful. But today's was nice and concise, but I would like to see those continue, I think, throughout the year.
Would you think it'd be possible to combine them, like have an elementary, a middle, and a high to be more respectful of the time of the administrators as well so that they don't have to come here just for a five-minute presentation and then sit through a two-and-a-half-hour meeting potentially?
I'm not opposed to grouping that in some fashion. I just don't want to miss getting that feedback.
No, I'm not saying get rid of any information. It would just be presented in a different manner.
But I think part of that would be, I mean, I'm just spitballing here, like, having this presentation on Tuesday ahead of the next Tuesday board meeting, so I've got seven days to take a look at this. I can ask some of, maybe some of the more basic questions of like, "Hey, I didn't understand what this acronym was," or whatever it is beforehand. Basically, do more pre-work, ask some of those basic questions. Then as the presentation goes along, ask questions that are tailored towards what was said in the presentation, as opposed to asking some of the stuff that I could have asked earlier in the week. I spent more, maybe a little bit more time, but figuring, hey, they're going to go through it anyway, so I'll just ask those questions if I have to. So, I mean, it's just, it's just doing some of the stuff ahead of time, on my own time, as opposed to coming in here and asking. I don't have to ask four questions in here. I could ask one or two, which cuts it down in general. But then also being limber enough to know that if we did put this in and tried it, we wouldn't be stuck in doing this for the next 30 years. If it didn't work for whatever reason, could always switch it back.
I like the idea of keeping it on Tuesday, but I don't know about going earlier because, again, when you're talking about people that are working and 6 o'clock is a rough time sometimes, so you know people are just getting off of work, especially people that might come in the audience. And we'd like to have more participation of the public come in and, I think, should they have questions or want to present before the board.
I'm fine with trying it. I just, I also appreciate the sentiment of giving a little bit more correspondence, maybe more memos. I like that idea as well, just to kind of gather some more information before the meetings, so that we can prepare more. I'm not saying that there's any deficit right now, but there's always room for improvement.
I think we just want to make sure that any information that we're getting in the form of memos or some kind of internal communication is also public knowledge and becomes communicated to the public as well. I mean, we don't want to work behind closed doors or anything like that. We want everything as much as possible to be open.
Do you think we just post, if we have a longer presentation, we'd still put the five-hour on-board docs, I would assume, for the public to respect, right? Or would it be, do we still, we still post them publicly, and then does it just come live after the meeting? Or is it live the entire? Does it remember, I believe for a time, the board packets weren't available to the public until after the meeting. Has it switched to where the board can view them beforehand now?
One of the things we'd have to investigate is when we can make them, we use a, the board knows this, public does not necessarily. We use a program called Board Docs that houses all the board packet information, the board agenda, and it gives us the ability to maintain confidentiality on some topics like personnel, student discipline that are legally required to be confidential. Gives us the ability to do that because board members have logins that protect that information. I think maybe James mentioned logistics, just having to work through some of that stuff. Can't remember, maybe it was somebody else. I apologize. But we'd have to work through, how can we do that? How can we make sure that the board has information in advance? Some of that, I think, I think in the long run, everything needs to be transparent. And so I think one of the points that Jim made was the importance of transparency in the board conducting its business. Nobody, not myself and none of the board members, neither tonight or in October, made any kind of inference about, you know, trying to be more cloak and dagger. That's not it. It's just a matter of trying to restructure how the board spends its time and does its work. So I think a really good point is, how can we maintain that transparency? Surely, there's some information that is confidential that the board has access to because of their role. Most of it, however, is public and should remain public. So working through those logistics to make sure that we continue to do that, although the board may conduct its business differently if it decides to change the meeting schedule a little bit. Although the board may conduct its business differently if it decides to, to change the meeting schedule a little bit.
But to your explanation, I think it was a great point, is attracting more candidates to be on the board. I think that's important as well, especially as we need, to dive deep into this, but like, I mean, essentially besides Christian, all of us essentially elected ourselves to the board, right? We just really needed one vote, that's what it all was, and that's really not how it should work. There should be multiple people that want to run for these roles, that run on some type of platform or whatever and like it works like democracy works, like in other districts, that's how it works. It does not here because people of Sycamore haven't traditionally came out and put their name in to run for these positions and with less meetings that may attract more people or it's less time commitment. And maybe that's quieter than I don't know, or maybe it's not, I don't know. It can't hurt, I'll say that.
I mean, I, I, I guess the next step would be to try to put together some kind of a structure that, that we can all take a look at and see if it, see if it works for anybody to join the game. And then maybe pick apart that structure till we get it to where we want it and then we can implement it and see how it works.
Calendar workshop.
Another meeting, hopefully.
You can do a workshop, but I was thinking, we just put together like a sample, a sample agenda. I, I'm thinking that from what we discussed, it would, it would make sense probably for, for me to work with the superintendent and to, you know, put together an agenda and maybe try to set out some timelines or some time limitations within that, within that structure or what we can devote to issues, maybe make a sample or, or something like that so that we could take a look at it and see if it works or if it's, if it's what we, what we really are discussing here if it adequately reflects that. And, and pick that apart and get it to where we're, where we like it and then, and then take it out for a test run and see how it does.
I, I like the idea of having as much stuff out there, you know, a week or two in advance as possible, especially from an agenda standpoint, maybe that includes.
I always like that, yeah.
Things, things like submitting committee reports just in a typed format instead. And then if there's something, you know, that we know we want to discuss, then we could send an email days in advance and say, let's move that to the discussion part, add a consent or wherever and know that we've got time to talk about it.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah, I always like, you know, it's always good to have that in advance and, yeah, so you can, so you can make decisions like that. Does that make sense though, in terms of a way to proceed?
Yeah, sure.
Let's do that, I think we can, I think we can get something together before the next meeting and send it out for folks to look at and then talk about it.
Somebody's, we do meet once a month.
Yes.
It's not like this is like a fourth thing, July.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, in the summertime or January.
Yeah.
Out of curiosity, I did look it up, DeKalb actually does meet twice a month as well. It was our next story, we're gonna say.
So we'll, we'll, we'll do that, we'll put that together. Next item then would be open discussion, issues, observations and questions.
Any top conferences you would recommend? The ISB conferences this weekend in Chicago. I'm just curious if there's anything that anyone that's been on longer, superintendent would recommend for any of board members to participate in there.
The new board session that's normally Friday, is there one on Friday, is there one on Friday? I don't think the agenda is here. Whatever that new board session is, is, I think it kind of sets up your weekend, in my, in my opinion. At least, that's how I felt for some reason.
I really liked the school board governance basics.
Yep.
I learned a lot about how every, I mean, you, you, more than just school board, you learn about how to govern, what, what does that look like, how is, how are things governed, so that was interesting.
Yeah, I think workshops on budgeting, finance. Those, those kind of always, always help. Seems like the more you know, the more you feel like you don't know. So, you know, to, to keep going to those workshops is, is always a good thing, I think.
Usually there's like a school finance basics, kind of a foundational. If you look in the title or description, I agree with you, and school finance is one of the more complicated issues that the board is responsible for and that's, that's usually a good one.
Yeah, you're either in a levy cycle or a budget cycle, so you're constantly, you know, involved in that, so. Anything that deals with the levy, anything that deals with budgeting. District's experience of how they do that. Probably wouldn't be a bad idea if somebody's got scheduling for board meetings too, to go to something like that, if somebody, you know, wants to talk about how they manage their, their board meetings. I couldn't hear, I, especially since we're talking about that.
If you email Norma to the next two, at the Illinois Association of School Boards, I did that last year and she can actually send you the notes for every single meeting. So after the meeting, they take, they take notes for almost all of them and they have PowerPoints. So like the big problem that I had was, you know, you can attend like four, but there's like fifty meetings going on. So if you really wanted to, to see something or attend something, like you can, you can still access the notes and meetings you could go to, so like last year I had just so much information that I could get. And a lot of it, I, I was able to get in links or, I kept a little Google Drive folder, but Laura Martinez is the, I, I think she's still the rep and I have her email, but.
Yeah, she is.
Yeah, so, so if you email her after, she'll send you stuff.
Yeah, there's normally a session about like how boards board or something like that, some, some queue name, of course. But that, normally in that session, it's a lot of intera, there's a lot of interaction, so there's other board members talking about things, either issues they're running into or whatever. So I thought that was beneficial and then allotting some time, which is always difficult, to go down to look at the vendors that are around there, because that's like a huge vendor set, like, I don't know, vendor is probably the best word. Just different things for the schools, different, like they're all trying to sell something.
Stuff you didn't even know that existed.
Things based on school safety, things, I mean, just anything you could possibly think of. Just to get exposure to what is out there for something like pique your interest or we may run into something in a conversation and you'd be like, oh, there's a product for that or whatever. I just, I, you could also get sucked into like an hour long thing, so just navigate your time well in there. But I think it's, it's definitely, it could be worthwhile.
And if you're aware of any of our vendors that we do business with, it's always good to stop and visit them.
Probably have free stuff to take with you.
Yeah, all the things you can carry, yeah.
Some news that was brought up for, at the last meeting, I was just wanting to follow up on. Have, with regards to the transportation issue, has the district ever investigated outsourcing transportation or even outsourcing a portion of transportation for its students that we can't get bus drivers for? So we don't have to do the double cycle?
We, we've investigated outsourcing transportation and we do outsource transportation for students who are bussed out of the district, for, you know, especially in unique programs. So during COVID and even after COVID, when we had trouble filling routes, we contacted not just for student, which is local, they, they do all the transportation for, for DeKalb, but probably three other, two or three other bus contract companies. And there are, unfortunately, they're having the same problems that local districts are. It's not necessarily the number of buses, it's just finding drivers. So it's a significant issue. As recent as last year, I don't think it's happened this year, but as recent as last year, I know about naming names, area districts who had to schedule, you know, a couple of days a week where different parts of the district had to wait an hour because they didn't have enough drivers. They would bus everybody else and then they would go back and pick up those students. And then had, they had to rotate that kind of around the community because they couldn't get enough drivers to, to transport. So school bus driver shortage has been coming for, that's the only reason I have my bus driver's license is because the transportation director I first got hired begged me to do it. It's not new, it just got worse during COVID. But we have, we have looked at that in the past and, and we will look at that in the future if that felt beneficial for the district.
Yeah, and there's legislation that affects this and there's union rules and it's, it's really, it becomes, as I recall, a complicated issue. And once you contract out your services, you, I don't, I think the statute prevents you from bringing them back in at a later date, so when you make that decision, you have to make it for good, you know, so.
Another, I, I, one other thing I wanted to add to. We're removing work for admin, I think would be an interesting topic, maybe for a future agenda item. As we, as a district, look at infrastructure, we talk about facilities and we talk about the potential for huge costs to the community with the needs for administrators. I think it would be wise for our board to consider cost-saving alternatives like remote work. Not in entirety, but maybe a hybrid version of it or some, something that could maybe lessen the space need for administrators. Where, where a job that, you know, by any other means might, you know, accounting or clerical, something that isn't with students could be done remotely, you know, might be a, might be a double edged benefit in that you might see more talent and you might also, you know, save the district money by not having to, you know, provide space for the, that. I don't know, just something I, I think would be worth discussing.
I think, Beth may remember this, at the legislative roundtable that Representative Kiker and Representative Montgomery hosted, gosh, several weeks ago now. A lot of the topic was about just staff shortages in general. And I think one, I made this comment, I think maybe we've talked about it before, I think one of the real issues facing schools in terms of recruitment is, for many years, if you had a job, you had to be on site, you know, and during the pandemic, that really shifted. Now, some, some companies are, are shifting back, but there's still a lot of employees that work remotely who work for companies that are just a hundred miles away, but thousands of miles away. And I think that's one of the disadvantages that schools have, you know, we, obviously we need to be in the building with our students, you know, providing that service. But I think there may be some positions within the school district, you know, accounting, there's administrative kind of functions. Administrators, I don't know that that's ever going to happen, you know, we need to be in the building. I know Mr. French is kind of excited. You know, the administrative work and accounting, things like that, accounts payable, health benefits. Could some of that be, be done remotely that would free up some space? And, and I think also, probably more importantly, make that kind of position more appealing in terms of recruitment. So I think in general, that's one of the things that education's going to have to wrestle with. Because we're, we're at a distinct disadvantage, especially in people coming out of college. They know that they can work for a company, come home in their pajamas and kind of go to the, the office.
Well, Kish College.
It's hard to beat that.
They did this last year and now all of their deans are, they're semi-remote. And we have all their admin, every admin there at Kish College who is, you know, assistant, support. They're, they have flex time, some are even completely remote. And it, it freed up a ton of space, which then is now being repurposed for either classroom space and it allowed them to partition off sections of the building rather than using tax money to re, to repair or improve those sections, they just quartered them off. They go, okay, we're going to re, we're going to retrofit this office space into room B thirteen hundred and it's a hybrid classroom. So we found a way to, to make more with less. So it's, it, and that was just, you know, something I found really interesting, just kind of modeling up that, but. And I think our district's going to be faced with a tough decision like that with our hundred plus year old admin building. I know the community's not going to be super excited about millions spent on a new admin building or leasing space, so this might be a really nice way to save some money.
Do you want to bring up AI? Oh, that was, yeah, that was on the list. That was more the future agenda, I would say. But one thing that I would like to, Eric and I discussed, because we're both on the technology committee, is an overview of the implementation policy the district has. I know we've had some back and forth discussion about that. But I just think there needs to be, in my opinion, a more clear procedure process for any teacher that's interested in implementing a new program. So we don't have a situation where it's been approved for curricular use, but then the program that they need to complete that task has not been approved at a district level. So kind of finding that balance, I think, is important and just having some clear procedures for the teachers to follow would be helpful in that. I'm not sure if that's a, a board policy or if that would be an internal issue.
It's really kind of an internal practice and that there is a process, but I, I think we could add some clarity to it for sure. We've had that, you know, correspondence and I, I think kind of the end result of that was that we've got a process that worked, I think one of the challenges with AI too is that, and esports, which is kind of part of that conversation, those are tech-heavy adoptions and changes. So it takes a little bit longer to work through that. Some of the curricular changes that, that may be a hard copy kind of textbook or something like that, which we probably don't do as much now as we used to, a little bit more straightforward. But the tech-heavy stuff is, you know, I think adding some clarity is not a bad idea and particularly after the last issue that we've been corresponding about, you know, the use in the high school. I think adding some clarity is just a good idea.
I think my ask is maybe one, one step higher than that and maybe more to, just at a curricular policy level, what is the school district stance on, on AI and how we're going to incorporate either the, the use of it or the prevention of the use of it throughout all, all curriculum and over the next, you know, over the foreseeable future. Is it, is it our policy, is a district that we're embracing it, we're finding ways to incorporate it and teach its use because that's the future or are we against it because we think if there's going to be abuses of it and how are we going to prevent that? Like either, either side, whichever side of the coin we're on, I think that's a worthy discussion to, to understand so that that can then set what those procedures and policies are below that, that both the curricular side and the technology side can interface on.
Yeah.
My, my ask for future agenda, sorry, can we move, if we transition to future agenda?
Maybe just hold off for a second.
Okay.
Just one thing I, I wanted to bring up was that I know we had some people here in the audience who came to speak about taxes and I wanted to let you know that this is a business meeting that we hold in public and so we have set agendas that we use to conduct our meetings and those agendas are agreed upon in advance. And while we want to hear your input and, and find out what you're thinking, they're not issues that we will address that would change our agenda the way we have it focused. And I would also like to say that when it comes to the tax issue, for the last, oh, two, two and a half months now, we've discussed the levy and gone into great detail about taxes and, and the levy. And perhaps some of the answers to your questions are, are in the videos that we have for those meetings. And if you don't find those answers satisfactory, I would suggest to you that you contact either the superintendent or our director of finance, our assistant superintendent for finance. And they can walk you through exactly why taxes are the way they are here and, and how they're structured here and our efforts to, to try to limit those as much as possible, but yet our need to participate with funding as the state has established it in the state of Illinois, so. So I, I don't want you to think that we're ignoring you, I just. I just want you to understand that, that that's the way we conduct business. So we do appreciate your comments and, and do understand your feelings. We live here, we pay taxes, and so we, we feel the same hurt that you do. And we try to do the best we can when it comes to funding schools and try to be as frugal as possible. And certainly, I think we, if you look into what we've talked about already, or future questions that you might have that you can discuss with the administrators, I think you'll under, you'll come to understand that we're, we really are trying. So with that said, now, certainly, I'm willing to go ahead with future of that.
I did want to add, and there's been a lot of discussion, obviously, in the community around taxes for, for years, but a lot recently regarding the transfer tax. I, I would like some sort of presentation just to kind of understand what that tax is, maybe what the, what the trend in that tax has been, what the restriction on the use of those funds is, and maybe where it's, where its origin is. It seems like there's a lot of confusion in the community about who, who's in charge of that tax. I mean, we don't pass laws, so therefore, we don't, we aren't the ones going out there and, and charging these fees. But since they come here, everyone thinks we're responsible for it. So I'd just like to understand what the, what the lay-in the late is there.
And the limited purpose that they can serve for us, yeah.
I'd like to bring up an item for future focus, or future agenda, actually. Just if we could learn a little bit more about the working condition of the security cameras around the schools. Are they up to par? I was told there was a problem with one of them, actually, and I just wondered if we could look into that more.
Sure.
Thank you.
Extending off what Eric said, regarding AI, having further discussion on some perhaps board policy revisions or additions would, would be warranted at this time, just so there's a set expectation across the district?
I just think it'd be a fun, fun meeting, Todd, just to hear how AI is being used in education. Fascinating.
Yeah.
And this is just.
It's already there, I'm sure.
And just for our future agenda items, I would like to look into job descriptions for some of the director positions for Oscar, just to see what responsibilities those individuals take on. And maybe that could be even just a report, that would be something that I'd like to look into, just to see what those individuals are responsible for.
I, I think that's something we probably could, that's something we could do by memo or something like that, where we could just give you a copy of the job description. Other issues? We want to shorten our meeting.
Can we have a three?
It's a perpetual.
Yeah. All right, well, if there are no future, other future agenda items, I need a motion to go into executive session for the consideration of matters related to the appointment, employment, discipline, or dismissal of personnel, matters related to individual students' purchase or lease of real estate and imminent litigation. So moved?
Second.
Then seconded, roll call.
Shiloh?
Yes.
Koppel? DeVito?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Gretoz?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Donbeck?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, we'll take a few moments to go into executive session, and then in turn to open session for our final vote. All right, is there a motion to approve the personnel report as presented?
So moved, Jones?
Second.
Moving, seconded, roll call.
DeVito?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Gretoz?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Shiloh?
Yes.
Koppel?
Yes.
Donbeck?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Moving, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Goes. Motion carries. We're adjourned, thank you.